Good day. Welcome to the forum, the Verdi, Camp Verdi Town Council Forum, where the candidates will be running on the August 2 primary election ballot. This forum is hosted by the League of Women Voters of Northern Arizona. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization that does not support nor oppose candidates. It envisions a democracy where every person has the desire, the right, the knowledge, and the confidence to participate. The League of Women Voters is an organization fully committed to diversity, equity, inclusion in principle and in practice. My name is Kevin Cook, a member of the League of Women Voters and your moderator for this forum. I do not vote in this forum. I am a resident elsewhere. This forum is being videotaped by Verdi Valley TV for showing on Cable 1, Channel 56, Sudden Link Channel 2, and Verdi Valley TV aired on YouTube. The purpose of this forum is to hear from the candidates on why they want to serve on the Camp Verdi Town Council. It is also an opportunity for the candidates to answer questions submitted by the voters to the League of Women Voters prior to this forum. The goal of the forum is fairness, civility, and engagement. I would like to introduce my timekeeper, Mary Gassaway, also a League member. Her role is to keep us all on time. She has three timekeeping signs: a one-minute sign, a 30-second sign, and a stop sign. She will raise the one-minute sign, then the 30-second sign to tell the speaker how much time is left, and she will raise the stop sign to signal you to end your sentence. The format is in three parts. Part one will be opening remarks. Each candidate will be given two minutes to introduce themselves to the audience. Then each candidate will be given two minutes to answer the question from the League of Women Voters. Questions submitted by the voters, candidates will be given one to two minutes to answer questions depending on the time allowed or the number of issues to cover. The moderator might also allow for rebuttal time to the questions for each candidate. Part three of the forum will be closing remarks. The candidates will have one minute to give their final remarks on why they want to be on the Verdi Town Council. I'd like to introduce the candidates to you now. On your right is Robert Foreman, Marie Moore, Wendy Escopier, and Robin Watley.
Yes.
Yes, thank you, thank you. As we get started, I also want to cover the guidelines of the forum. The moderator's role is to manage the forum fairly for all candidates with the goal to keep the discussion moving forward. The order of speaking by the candidates has been determined at random. The candidates are to be respectful of each other's points of view, to speak their minds freely, but not engage in personal attacks. Time limits on responses to questions will be strictly observed. If the guidelines are not adhered to by the candidates, the moderator will adjourn the Our candidates will begin their two-minute opening statements, why they are running for Camp Verdi Town Council, and their qualifications and skills for the position. Their order of speaking is Marie, Wendy, Robert, and Robin. Marie, would you like to tell us why you're running for council and your qualifications?
Absolutely.
You have two minutes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Marie Moore. I've been a resident of Camp Verdi for over 25 years. I was a graduate of Mingus High School in 2004. I have worked for the town of Camp Verdi in the past. I raised my children. I've had two graduates through Camp Verdi High School, and my last one is a freshman at Camp Verdi High School. And I'm also a business owner on Main Street, and so I'm very committed to our town. I've seen a lot of changes from the time that I've been a small child through town and what's happened. I've seen businesses thrive and I've seen businesses die. And so when the opportunity came up to consider running for Town Council, I spoke with a lot of different business owners, and it was very clear that as business owners, we felt like there needed to be more representation on the Town Council. And it takes a lot of commitment. At this point in my life, my kids are all older, so I have the ability to do that. And having had previous experience from doing the transcription work with the council meetings, I'm very familiar with how the council meetings run, and I've stayed very active in what's been happening for the past seven to 10 years through council. So it wasn't an intimidating process for me to want to go ahead and pursue this avenue. I really am looking toward wanting to increase our tourism through the town, beautify Main Street, get some more active community involvement meetings happening, and also getting our town to commit to working with our youth and having our youth have the opportunities to have some work experience before they get out into the real world.
Thank you. I would also like to interject that there are these four candidates running for three open seats, and the term is a four-year term. Next up is Wendy, please.
Thank you, and good morning, and thank you for this opportunity. My name is Wendy Escopier, and I am a council candidate member because I want to protect the values and sense of place that make Camp Verdi special. Our family came to Camp Verdi in 1989, and we decided to stay into retirement because of the rural western character, the beautiful views, and the family-friendly atmosphere of the town. I have a Bachelor of Science in Journalism and a Master's in Public Administration, both from NAU. I retired in October of 2018 with over 26 years of public service experience, which included working for the town of Camp Verdi in the Marshals' office, as a planner for the Community Development Department, working on the town's first general plan, and doing special projects for the town manager. I worked for the town for approximately 12 years. I worked as the clerk of the Board of Supervisors for Coquigny County for over 12 years, and I worked as a consultant for the town of Prescott Valley in the clerk's office, assisting them with municipal elections. Prior to working for government, I was a newspaper reporter in rural Arizona, specifically in the Verdi Valley and Sedona areas. I reported on towns, schools, and special districts. I also served on the Camp Verdi School District Board of Directors. I sought better employment outside of the Verdi Valley in 2006, and I relocated my official residency to Flagstaff. That was so I could take the job in Coquigny County. I reestablished official residency here in Camp Verdi in 2018. Camp Verdi is experiencing rapid growth, especially from what it was 33 years ago when I first moved here. I will work with citizens and developers to guide our future growth to meet our needs. Thank you again for this opportunity.
Thank you. Robert, your turn.
Thank you. My name is Robert Foreman. I'm a resident of Camp Verdi. And first, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. You do, I appreciate the work that you do. My mother was a member of the League of Women Voters for many, many years. The second thing I'd like to add is that I've known Marie, and I've known Wendy, and I've known Robin for a great number of years, and they are all fine, intelligent, capable ladies, and any one of them or all of them would make a fine council person. My biggest difficulty right now is trying to figure out which one I can't vote for. I moved to Camp Verdi in 1992 from the Grand Canyon. I've been here for 30 years. I've owned a small business. I was appointed and served as chairman of the Board of Appeals for two years. I was appointed and served as chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission for three years. I went to work for the town in 2006, and then I retired in September of 2021 as the building official. I've been involved in the last two general plans as the building official and also as a chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I've been involved in the APS-focused forums. I'm very involved in the community. My main concern is to keep our Verdi River safe and manage the coming growth, because the growth is coming. There's no way to stop that. And to protect the downtown area, I'm very concerned that the downtown area not be allowed to decay with the expansion on the 260 and I-17 corridors. As much as I admire these ladies, and I think they'd be fine council people, I also think I would be a good council person. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Robin, please.
Hi. First, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for putting this on each political year that we have. My name is Robin Watley, and I was born and raised in Yalpai County. I'm a graduate of Prescott High School, and later I received an Associate of Arts degree at Yalpai College, also a Bachelor of Arts from Prescott College. Upon graduation, I began teaching. I taught everything from first grade through eighth grade, and actually, I truly enjoyed teaching middle school. It was a lot of fun. I did retire from teaching four years ago, and I've lived in Camp Verdi for 37 years, and four of my children have graduated from Camp Verdi High School. I began my political career by serving as chairperson of the Parks and Recs Commission. Also, I attended council meetings regularly for three years before I even decided to run. At the beginning of my term in office, we were, our economic situation was not good. It was the recession, and all we could do was stay afloat at that point. However, since that time, the town is financially stable and has the ability now to fund the amenities that Camp Verdi needs for a good quality of life. Some of the projects I've been included in are the acquisition of the sanitary district and the water company, the construction of the Camp Verdi Library, the widening of 260, the building of the 118 acres Camp Verdi Sports Complex. I love Camp Verdi, and I'm committed to maintaining its character, protecting its neighborhoods, and the Verdi River. Thank you.
Thank you. Now the candidates will have two minutes each to answer the lead question that was sent to them earlier. The question is, "As the Verdi Valley continues to grow, what does growth look like in your municipality?" Did I leave one out? No, I didn't.
I think we're good.
Specifically, tell us what you plan to do in your elected role. Can we start with Robert on this one? Wendy, Robin, Marie? Robert, sir?
As far as growth in Camp Verdi, we've been talking about economic development along I-17 and 260 corridors for 30 years now, and now that's coming. The growth is going to come. There's going to be development there. The developers have discovered us. Our main function right now, as far as that, is to make sure that it's good growth, that it's decent growth, and that it's good for the community. We don't need to try to go out and get anymore. It's here. My main concern is, number one priority is the Verdi River. That's the character of Camp Verdi, is the Verdi River. We need to do everything in our power to protect it and preserve it. My other two main points would be the downtown area. I don't want to find us in a situation where the downtown area starts to decline and decay. I think the council needs to focus on the downtown area and improve it from the condition it's in now. And then my second priority would be Verdi Lakes. I would like to see Verdi Lakes be brought deeper into the community. I would like to see maybe some infrastructure out there. I've been, as I said before, I've been involved in Camp Verdi for over 30 years. I'm not shy about saying what I think, and I have a lot of experience. I have a lot of experience with town government. I have a lot of experience with the political atmosphere in Camp Verdi, and I think I have a detailed knowledge of what the vast majority of the citizens in Camp Verdi want. I've been involved in a Chamber of Commerce, in the Town Council, in Qantas, and a lot of different services. And as I said, I worked for the town for 16 years. I retired in September, and in October, they reappointed me to the Planning and Zoning Commission. So that's pretty much all I would have to say.
Thank you, Robert. Wendy?
All right. Thank you for the question. Well, Camp Verdi is growing. There's no doubt about that. We've seen this growth in the form of the large RV parks, the new housing developments, and the several marijuana grow facilities. There's a possibility for even more growth as developers realize our financial potential for our area. The town has been behind in making sure policies and procedures are in place to handle this growth. Several areas for updating the town codes and ordinances have been identified, and they will start soon. So the current council has made plans to move forward in that direction, which is great. But I want to see the town seek out the type of growth that we need, especially what I'm hearing from people when I meet with them, and they're saying that we need adequate jobs that pay a livable wage. We need housing that is affordable for those people who are working here in our area, and we need more local shopping opportunities. That's what people are telling me when I meet with them. The most important thing as an elected official that I will do related to growth is to not give in to developers. Time and time again, different councils, various councils, I'm not saying just Camp Verdi Council, but different councils, time and time again, they put aside the concerns they have from citizens, and they establish policy, and they approve development because they're afraid if they don't approve the development, the developer will go somewhere else. That's simply not the case here. They've done their research, and they know that Camp Verdi will be profitable. As an elected official, I will not give in to developers who seek to circumvent our town's general plan, code, and ordinances. They've done their research, and they know they can make a profit here. Whenever possible, I think the council should utilize the planned area development zoning, which allows for negotiations of the amount of open space, setbacks, and building heights, and other items. So this allows for cohesive development that the town can participate in. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Robin?
Wendy brings up a really great point. We do have developers that are coming in, some that want to cut corners, some that don't want to follow the rules, as everyone else in Camp Verdi does, and I'm an absolute no vote on that. I believe that everyone should follow the same rules regardless. So, and I agree with Wendy as well, that they're here to make profit, and so they can follow the rules. And if they decide to go somewhere else, sorry, I'm sorry about that, but there will be someone else who will come in and do well. Camp Verdi's been preparing for growth, as Robert said, for a long time. When we acquired the large stretch of Highway 260 going to Cottonwood, the town began to put in place infrastructure so that those big box stores could go out on 260. In fact, when 260 was widened, we made sure that we put in sewer sleeves underneath the highway so that when those big box stores come, we can expand our sewer, and our water, and other utilities along that corridor. But having said that, we can keep our small town. I want to keep our Main Street, our mom-and-pop's stores there. I want to keep our city center. I want to be able to close down the street and have a festival for Camp Verdi. So I think we can have the growth on 260. I also think we can keep our small-town Camp Verdi in our town site. I want to protect our neighborhoods and our historic Fort Verdi State Park. In this way, we can preserve our cultural heritage while supporting business growth and protecting our neighborhoods at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you very much for those responses. We have a list of questions that the candidates have not seen submitted by local voters.
Do I speak up?
Excuse me.
I'm good. They covered everything, so.
Marie, please. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Actually, what I'm going to ask you to do is repeat the question, just because, you know, I could extremely piggyback off of what everybody said, but we'll just repeat it again just so we're fresh with how we're going to answer it.
The League's question is, thank you, Marie, "As the Verdi Valley continues to grow, what does growth look like in your community? Specifically, tell us what you plan to do in your elected role."
Thank you. So everyone really just covered what the growth looks like in Camp Verdi's community. It's definitely coming. We're right on the cusp of what feels like a big boom, so to speak. How I would want to handle it as far as being a council member is, obviously, I'm vested. I own a building on Main Street. I have a business on Main Street that I'm currently expanding. And so it is in my best interest personally to make sure that the town of Camp Verdi is a viable town and keeps a great heartbeat. And I look at Main Street, and I see a lot of lacking there. We have this quintessential little town, and there could be so much more there for our residents, but also to bring people in. We have the Verdi Valley. We have Monizuma Castle. We have Monizuma Well. You know, we have so many different things just right in our little area for people to see that I think we need to bring that out to the public. And then once the public sees that, oh, you know, come see Fort Verdi. It's a great little location and attraction, and the history that's there is amazing. And then once people start to see what our town has to offer, then our businesses are going to start to thrive. As far as housing, I think that we have a double-edged sword. You've got, we're coming into a recession. The price of everything's risen. You're looking at, businesses don't want to come into Camp Verdi because there's not a place for their employees to live. But you've got contractors who are hesitant to come in with housing developments because the price of what it would cost to build these housing developments, they're not going to recover that. People aren't going to be able to afford it. People can't afford it because we don't have good-paying jobs. So we really have to find, being on Town Council's not an easy thing. You have to find that balance on how we can make everything work to build the town up, but also retain our small-town values.
Thank you.
Well done.
My apologies for...
No problem. No offense taken. You're good.
Well done.
Thank you.
The next question should piggyback off of this one. Can we start with Marie, Robin, Robert, and Wendy in that order this time, please? The question is, "With the big box stores coming to 260, the infrastructure already in place, what draws people back to the old town that you're all so pleased to have?"
That is a million-dollar question. That is a great question, and that's what I think the Camp Verdi really has to work on. I have spoken to so many different residents, and there's people that say, "Why can't we be like Old Town Cottonwood?" They bring people in constantly, and then you have people that say, "I don't want to be like Old Town Cottonwood." So there has to be a balance that we be able to find. You know, we need to work on beautifying our Main Street. We started it in 2004. Correct me if I'm wrong on that date. I remember I was like a junior senior in high school when they put in the bypass. And along with that, then they put in sidewalks. We got trees. We have a beautiful little Main Street, but a lot more can be done. The other thing that I think goes hand-in-hand with that is the fact that we need to have more, just like Robin had mentioned, festivals. Like, we have a lot of great community members that remember having block parties where we shut off Main Street, and not only did it bring in just our residents, but it brings in other people from other towns. You know, people want to get out of the valley. They want to come to a smaller town. They want to have a good time, and then they want to go home, and that's what we want. We want them to come and see what we have, enjoy it, and then go on back home. But I think that if we work on really advertising what Camp Verdi has to offer, work on getting some gateways so people realize that Camp Verdi is not just what I refer to as Junk Food Junction, and also the casino, that we're not just based off of the freeway, and that there's definitely more to see in town, then we can start to draw those people in, and it's going to make a huge difference.
Thank you so much. Robin?
Hi. Yeah, that's an excellent question. How do we get people to our downtown? We do have some things downtown. We have Fort Verdi State Park, and we also have, we also have our festivals where we block off the street. In fact, Corn Fest is coming up. I hope everyone comes to that, and also Hauser Corn is going to be selling tomorrow morning. So the corn is here. So I agree. We need to, I've always been a proponent of our festivals, our block parties, our Halloween trick-or-treat, Corn Fest, Fort Verdi Days, all of those things that we do, I've been a huge proponent of. It brings people in, but mainly, I have a good time. It's for the people of Camp Verdi. Anyone can come. There's no admission charge. You just show up, and we come, and we have a good time, and I am at all of them. Either I'm volunteering or I'm just having fun. So yeah, we've got to concentrate on trying to get people to our downtown so that our downtown is viable, so our downtown doesn't die. So yes, that's a huge thing that the council needs to tackle, for sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Foreman?
I don't sense a whole lot of disagreement at this table on the issues, any of the issues, as far as growth, as far as keeping our small-town values, as far as having our rural areas out in McCracken and Quarter Horse and Salt Mine, and having some good development. As far as the downtown area, I don't know that I can add anything that Robin and Marie didn't say. We do need to try to attract more people there. I can add that as far as the block party that Marie mentioned, my youngest son, he loved that block party. That was, that was the high point of his year, was when he could go to that block party down there and hang out with his friends. I would be very interested in thinking about bringing that back. And yes, advertise our festivals, focus on the downtown area, make it pretty, make it pedestrian-friendly, bring people in so they can visit, so they can enjoy everything that Camp Verdi has to offer. They can spend some of their money with us, and then they can go back home. And I think we're all, I think we're pretty much all on the same page here. I don't think there's very much that we don't agree on.
Wonderful. Thank you. Wendy?
All right, great. That's a great, a great question. So big boxes, big box stores out on Highway 260, that's a great location for them. They can serve people both Cottonwood and Camp Verdi. But when people are traveling, people are tourism, they're not going to big-box stores. I mean, I've traveled all around the countryside, and we don't go looking for big-box stores. What we do look for is ecotourism, and we look for historic tourism, and that's right in our downtown. And so, as everyone else has already mentioned, we need to capitalize on the fort. We need to capitalize on the festivities and the events that we have in our downtown area. The Pecan and Wine Festival was started back in the early 2000s when I worked for the town, and it won an award from the governor's office for being a great festival. I was out there at the time with the general plan boards, getting input from citizens and folks on what the general plan should look like, and folks from Prescott had told me that the festivals and the events we were having in downtown Camp Verdi reminded them of Prescott in the old days when they had their big Fourth of July events and stuff. And that's really what we need to be known for, for the downtown area. We need to spend the money on developing, restoring, helping business owners restore their buildings, and having, like Marie said, that viable downtown. That's just imperative for our future. That's our sense of place, and that's what's so important. And there's a lot of local history there. You've got Halit Plaza. You've got Fort Verdi State Park. You've got the White Bridge Park. There's a lot of history there and a lot of activities.
Thank you very much. Fiduciary question comes now. You've all mentioned inflation. You've all mentioned housing. A challenge for low-income workers, wages are an issue. Affordability is an issue. If we get an economic downturn, how will you vision your guidance of the city on budget matters? Let's start with Wendy on this one, please.
I'm sorry, was I first?
Yes, please.
Well, thank you. Thank you for the question. You know, since Camp Verdi depends on tourism, we can't ignore the facts of our country right now with rising inflation, rising gas prices. You know, these... You know, these factors will have a negative impact, or could have a very negative impact, on our area as far as reduced sales tax collection, businesses that are trying to survive in the downtown area. I was pleased to see that the town is looking at long-range projections when they look at their budget. That's something that hadn't been done in the past, when they were looking at kind of a 10-year plan where you look out and you determine and almost try to guesstimate when the next recession will be, and you make sure that your budgeting accommodates that. So, I would like to see the town continue that and even have kind of different scenarios where if the budget, the economy is really good, we can do this with a budget. If it's not so good, we can do this. If there's a downturn, then we need to make these cuts and have that kind of baked into the process so that everybody knows what could happen.
Great answer. Thank you. Robin, can you continue that part?
Sure. I was around for the 2008 recession, and times were hard in City Hall. We didn't have any money. But you know what? We came through it pretty well, and the reason was, we had been frugal. We were very fiscally conservative with our money, and that's how we made it. We did not let one employee go. Now, there were employees that left that were not replaced, but we never let one of our employees go. And you know, we kind of came through it okay. Other cities around us were, you know, singing the blues, and we were just like, this is everyday life for us. So, we exist on sales tax, and that was, you know, we didn't have much sales tax coming in at that time. So, we've always kind of been aware that bad times could come, and so, we've always put money aside for that. Right now, our unassigned fund balance is $4,600,000, and that is 111% higher than our fiscal year 2020 budget. So, we are being, we're able to, because of this unassigned fund balance, build a library, build a 118-acre sports complex because we have that. But we're always aware that something could, a downturn could come, and so, we do have money, a substantial amount of money saved aside in case that happens. And as Wendy says, our financial director and our manager are very aware that, you know, you never know what's going to happen tomorrow financially, and so, they prepare for it. So, Camp Verdi's, Camp Verdi's in a good place at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Marie, could you further that?
Yeah, absolutely. As far as how I would handle when, not if, we receive this recession, because it's coming in my personal opinion, like Robin had said, and Wendy as well, right now, the town financially is doing well. We have a lot of projects that are coming in the pipeline, and those aren't going to be affected regardless of if we have a decrease in sales tax. Again, I own a business on Main Street. I'm going to be greatly affected if we get this recession in. My sales tax to the town and the state is going to drop, you know, hopefully not that much, but probably considerably. And so, the fact that we have pre-planned and we have all these projects still coming through the pipeline, Camp Verdi's still going to progress and grow and get the things done that they've already planned for over the next few years that I think is going to still help see us move forward. The one thing that we would have to focus on is, people may not travel out of state, but if we encourage people to come, stay in-state, but take a two-hour drive from Phoenix, take some time down from Flagstaff and come to see Camp Verdi, we put on some more festivals. Yes, you have to spend some money to make some money, but the more sales tax that we bring in, because we host different types of events that are family-friendly events, get people out of the valley, get them out of taking their kids to these indoor event-type things, get them out, get them to see the Verdi River. People come into the community, then they need to go to the restaurants, they need to go to the stores, and they're going to be putting money back into our community. We just have to make it known that we have such a great little area for them to spend their money at rather than taking it out of state and going somewhere else. And being centrally located in the state of Arizona, we are in a great position to be that place for them to come.
Thank you so much. Robert?
I've been involved in the town budget details for the last 16 years as an employee of the town, and I think the key word is prudence. We need to be prudent with our money. We need to be aware of the fact, like Marie said, that we may have a recession coming. Camp Verdi is entirely dependent on sales tax. We have no property tax. And like Robin said, I remember the recession of 2008, and if we had not had a healthy reserve at that time, I don't think we would have come through it because it was tough. Things were tough, and it was hard, and we didn't lay off any employees, but there was certainly talk about it, and there were certainly plans to do it if we had to. But we did make it through that recession. I don't know if there's a recession coming or not. I hope not, because now that I'm retired, I only have so much money. But I agree. We need to promote Camp Verdi. We need to get in-state visitors in Camp Verdi. We need them to come in and enjoy Camp Verdi, and we need to be cautious and prudent, and we need to make sure that we have a healthy reserve in our accounts in case there is a recession or in case something unforeseen happens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin, can I, can I just tag on about something?
If all people want to tag on, that's fine. Yes, please.
One other thing to consider, you know, we've talked about recession quite a bit here, which is a little beyond the original question, I realize. But one thing we do need to realize is that from the early 80s, there have been plans to develop the I-17 and 260 corridor, and each time, there was a recession or there was a downturn, and something happened, and those plans sat, and then property changed hands and new plans came about. And so, I think we really need to be aware of that we're experiencing incredible rapid growth right now. But depending on what happens with a recession, that could slow down in the future. And if that does, that's a great opportunity for the town to then make sure that all of the policies, the procedures, the general plan, the ordinances, everything's updated and ready.
Someone else like to add to that?
I agree with Wendy completely.
It was a great point. Thanks.
Thank you. Next question is, we'll start with Marie. Water is such an important resource in the Verdi Valley. At Camp Verdi, we're working on projects designed to preserve the Verdi River. I saw a guy today washing down his driveway in the city of Sedona with water that was spilling down the street, and thinking to myself, this is not a good use of our precious resource. Talk about water issues in the Verdi Valley.
Oh, good one. Okay. So, let me give you a little bit of background. I was raised in a ranching family, and I was raised by a very water-conscious father. Like, he'd shut the water off if he felt like I was in the shower for too long when I was in high school. So, we, I lived on a ranch. We dry-camped. Water has always been drilled into me from a small child of that it is the most precious resource that we have. We didn't have a lawn when we were growing up because my dad would not allow us to waste the water for a lawn. My mom had plants, and that was a source of contention because my dad didn't want to water the plants because it was unnecessary in his opinion. So, I have a little bit of a more conservative background when it comes to our water resources. I think it's amazing that the town has purchased the water company. I think that that, in an overall general umbrella, is going to be very, very important for our town in coming events and us having our own water rights and retaining our water rights. As far as the Verdi River goes, I think that there's, I do come from a different generation as far as grazing the Verdi River and seeing the Verdi River change, and I think that there's things that can be done to help preserve the Verdi River more than what's already been done. Just in my lifetime, I've seen the Verdi River shrink, and so, I think that we need to address a lot of like foliage issues, things like that. You know, that's always going to be a controversial issue as far as irrigation rights, who has them, who has more rights, those type of things. I don't think that that's ever going to be a resolved issue, but I think in general, for the most part, our residents in Camp Verdi are water-conscious people. So, I think if we just continue on with encouraging people to remain water-conscious in our town and making them understand the implications of what could happen. But we do sit on, in a very good water area, so to speak, in our state, so Camp Verdi itself is not hurting like maybe northern Arizona is, so.
Thank you. Robert, I know you're passionate about water issues. Talk to us.
Well, as an Arizona native who grew up in Prescott out in the mountains, we are very water-conscious as well. The Verdi River is our greatest asset. It's our most precious resource, and we have to protect it no matter what happens. And if there's any development along the Verdi River, we need to make sure the developers have mitigation plans. And like Wendy mentioned before, we can't just let the developers run roughshod over us and do whatever they want to because we're desperate for them to come into town. I've seen that happen before. I do think most of the residents of Camp Verdi are water-conscious. I know I am. I don't use very much water, and I know I would, if I was on the council, I would keep a Hawkeye on the Verdi River and the developers coming in and our water supply, because without water, we're done. So, it is our most vital resource, and it is the first priority of the town council, any town council, no matter who's on it, is to protect the Verdi River. Thank you.
Thank you. Robin?
Oh, okay. The Verdi River is the last free-flowing river in the state of Arizona. I mean, that alone should wake us all up and want everyone in Arizona to protect it. It's the reason Camp Verdi is where it is. Camp by the river. So, we've got to do what we can to preserve it. I think one of the number-one things that the town did was acquire the water company. It took years for us, decades, to come to this agreement that we could have the water company and that we could control some of the water from the Verdi. It also gives us the ability to acquire water rights. So, we want to pursue those. One of the best ways, I think, to get people to, to want to preserve the river is to get them on it. If you've ever floated the Verdi, it's just an amazing experience. It's like a whole nother world that you're in. It's just peaceful, birds, the water, camaraderie with your fellow kayakers, and it's just a truly special experience. And I think if people get on there and they, and they get that, get that feeling that they too will see what a precious resource it is. So, hopefully, people will go kayaking. Anyone want to go?
We have four kayaks. We're ready.
Okay.
Thank you. Wendy, talk about water.
Well, water is, is critical. You know, our, my girls grew up playing in the Verdi, Verdi River. There was a swimming hole nearby that they enjoyed. Our grandkids are now enjoying the Verdi River and kayaking. And I know that the town has been working very hard to secure water. Purchasing the water company was the first step in that. I know also that the town is very closely watching the Gila River adjudication, and that impacts private wells. So, Camp Verdi's, the water situation in Camp Verdi is a little different than in other areas. You have private wells, and you have some that are on water companies. Verdi Lakes has their own water company. Then you have the Camp Verdi Water Company that serves the downtown area. And it's really the, the private wells, that, that should be concerning to people. There's the Gila River adjudication, which has the impact to affect wells within a certain distance of the Verdi River. The last thing in the world we want is for our town to be included in an active management area with a Department of Water Resources, because then they really are going to restrict what you do for water, who gets water, where development comes in. I mean, it's, it's very, very restrictive. Prescott Valley, Prescott is under that. So, we need to really be on top of that. I liked Marie's idea with the foliage on the Verdi River. I mean, there's a lot of overgrowth there, and that uses water, and it needs to be cleaned out, and then we can have our recreation on the Verdi River, which drew us all here to begin with and draws many other visitors as well. So, it's a, it's a very, very important, very, very serious topic, and one that I look forward to being involved with.
Great. Thank you. Camp Verdi just signed a historic agreement with the Yavapai Apache Nation. What kind of opportunities, what kind of challenges does that present to the town? Robert, can we start with you on that? I don't know much about this issue. It's new to me, so.
It's rather new to me, too. We need to cooperate with the Yavapai Apache Nation. They're our neighbors. They live here. They share all of our infrastructure. They share our resources. They share our tourism. The casino is a good, a good economic boost for the town of Camp Verdi. We need to cooperate with their, with their council. We need to work with them. We need to be friends with them. We all live here. We all love it, and we all want the best for it. So, we should continue doing everything we can to cooperate with the Yavapai Apache Nation. Thank you.
Thank you. Wendy?
Can you repeat the question?
Camp Verdi just signed a historic agreement with the Yavapai Apache Nation. What challenges, opportunities does it bring to Camp Verdi?
Well, it brings great opportunity for the town of Camp Verdi and the Yavapai Apache Nation to work together. From my understanding of it, and I've read all the material on it and read through the agreement, it provides for some shared economic development areas, which is, will benefit both the town and the nation. This is important because the town and the nation, we're, we're neighbors, and we depend on each other for success. The challenges will be making sure that we're all on the same page of what we envision for, for growth, future growth in our area. But I think that's a challenge that can be overcome rather easily just by having continual meetings and getting public input, getting input from Yavapai Apache Nation, citizens, their council, as well as Camp Verdi citizens and our council and staff.
Thank you. Marie?
Yeah, so, I'm going to piggyback off of what Wendy said. It's, it was an amazing, I felt blessed to be a part of it. I know that probably Robin feels the same without speaking for her, but that was a historical agreement that came together. The one thing that I think is really important for people to understand is that the Yavapai Apache Nation did not have to include the town of Camp Verdi in any of it. They came to us and asked us to be a part of it. It didn't hinge, Camp Verdi didn't have a deciding factor in it. The Yavapai Apache Nation came to us and said, we are a community. Our children are being raised together. In the past, things haven't always worked synergistically between Camp Verdi and the nation, and they don't want it to continue to be that way. We all want to move forward and benefit our area. The fact that what they have offered as far as a return in sales tax on the property that they've gained is historical, not something that they had to do. I think that it's just going to be the, the beginning of watching Camp Verdi actually become the community that it should have always been. There's not going to be this dividing factor of you have the town, and then you have the nation. Now, we're one, and this is just the beginning of it. And the Yavapai Apache Nation, they were there first, and they have so much rich history to share with our community. And I was, again, I was just so absolutely thrilled to be a part of that, and I look forward to seeing how we're going to move forward with it.
Thank you for that. Robin, please.
Well, first, I have to thank Marie for those comments. I mean, ditto to everything that she said. Absolutely. I, too, felt very blessed to be part of council as we came together with the Yavapai Apache Nation. This has been, we've always wanted that relationship, and it took their council and our council and our other people that were our water attorneys and all of our other people to come together at the same moment to make this agreement. I don't see any downsides in this agreement. I don't see any downsides in this agreement. As Marie said, they didn't have to come to us. We depend on them, many people depend on them for employment. But they're also willing to give back and they're willing to give us our city sales taxes on land that they own. So, there's no downside to that. They are a part of our community, just as we, I believe, are part of their community. We both want the same things. We both want to have a great place for our kids to grow up, schools for our kids to learn in, and a wonderful place that we all call home.
Thank you so much for that. The Verde Valley is comprised of several unique cities and towns, yet we all are united in a single valley with singular concerns for our future. What role do you see Camp Verde playing, what leadership role do you see Camp Verde playing in the future of the valley? I mean, I'll start with you, Robin, please.
Oh, goodness, okay. Well, we have been aware of the differences between our cities. Sedona is not Camp Verde. You know, I know. It's just a totally different kind of place. And that's great because, you know, we don't want everything to be the same. We have worked very hard to develop relationships with our other cities in the Verde Valley. That hasn't always been the case. We were kind of in, I felt, competition. We were competing with each other. And in the past five years, we have all come together and said, you know, if we work together, we can, you know, all boats will rise, you know, if we all work together. So, say you want to go to downtown Cottonwood and you want to do wine tasting. And then, maybe after that, you head over to Sedona and look at the Red Rocks and then to top off, then you spend the night and to top off the next day, you head to Out of Africa to see what we have over here. And maybe you want to see the fort and our downtown. So, if we all work together, everyone's economic situation rises. So, we have worked on this very hard. And we have, I think we have a great relationship now with our other cities. I'm remembering the widening of 260. Sedona Town Council was there, Cottonwood Town Council was there, Camp Verde Town Council was there. We were all there because that was going to benefit all of us, as does anything else that we do. So, definitely, I'm for maintaining our good relationship with our other cities.
Wendy, please.
That's a great question. Thank you. Thank you for that. And I have a little bit of a different perspective on it. As a newspaper reporter here in the late 1980s, early 1990s, it always amazed me how similar the issues were between Camp Verde and Sedona. At the same time, they were dealing with the same growth issues. They incorporated approximately around the same time as each other. So they were dealing with the same issues. As far as future leadership role and interacting with the other areas, the other cities, the Sedona Forum gave way to the Verde Valley Forum. And that invited people from all of the municipalities in the Verde Valley and Sedona to come together, speak on a topic that was germane to each of them, and come up with solutions that each one could handle. I would see that, I would like to see that continue if it hasn't already. It's imperative for the communities to work together. We may look differently as far as we don't have the Red Rocks, they've got Old Creek, we've got the Verde. But our issues are very, very similar. Our concerns are very, very similar. And the best way to handle that is through something like the Verde Valley Forum and have that discussion and include the community as well, not just elected officials, but include the community in it as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert, could you talk about this issue as well, please?
Cities and towns are kind of like people. They have different personalities and they have different outlooks and sometimes they have different objectives. And like Robin said, Sedona is not Camp Verde, Cottonwood is not Camp Verde, Jerome is not Camp Verde. That said, we have a lot of common interest as well. We all live in the Verde Valley. We all depend on the resources of the Verde Valley. And we all, to one degree or another, depend on the Verde River. And the Verde Valley Forum is a great idea. And we need the outreach to the other cities and towns. We need to communicate with them, cooperate with them, see what projects we can do together. And I've observed the last few years, as Robin said, that the town manager has made great strides in reaching out to the other communities in the Verde Valley. Is there some competition? Yes, sure, there's some competition once in a while. But I think our common interest and our common needs outweigh any possible competition that we might have between each other and any possible difference of personalities that we might have, or if you want to say, culture, however you want to phrase it. It's vital that we work together, all of us. And I think the leaders and the citizens of all the communities in the Verde Valley understand that and I think they want to see us work together and help each other out as much as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Marie?
So the question, repeat the question for me because I believe that you're asking how Camp Verde could be the leader.
How can Camp Verde lead in this aspect of preserving, you know, the resources of the valley and being?
Okay. So, I think right off the bat, the fact that Camp Verde is truly the gateway into the Verde Valley makes us the leader. I think that it comes back to us having to put a little bit more into making Camp Verde known. We need to actually have gateways so that people understand where they're at, where they're going, signage. We have a lot of history in the Verde Valley. I think that if we capitalize on what Camp Verde has to offer and then people understand that, like Robin said, if you want to go to Cottonwood and do some wine tasting, run up to Jerome and do the haunted, you know, whole thing, but don't forget to stop at Tuzigoot because all of that cultural history is all included in the Verde Valley. Go see Sedona. Just like Robin said, we don't have, or maybe it was Wendy, we don't have the Red Rocks that they have. But Camp Verde itself can really be the leader because you're coming into Camp Verde first. It doesn't matter which angle you're going to come into. You're going to hit it whether you're coming from Payson, you're coming from I-17, you know, from the north or the south. So, if we can make sure that our resources are understood and known and make it a very welcoming area to come into and then it be known what else is available around and then have them come back to Camp Verde before they leave, I think that that's what would make us the leader in that capacity.
Great. Thank you for that. Robert? Does Camp Verde have a traffic problem? If it does, does it have a solution?
It doesn't have a traffic problem, any major traffic problem at the moment. There are some areas that need improvement. Anytime a developer comes in with a project, he has to do a traffic study to see what kind of impact, whether it's a commercial project or whether it's a residential project. There are quite a few people that would love to see a stoplight put in at McCracken and Quarter Horse. If there is one touchy area, that would be it. With the development of the manufactured home project down there on Finney Flat Road, they had to do a traffic study. And the developers had to show how they were going to handle the traffic. That's what your town engineer is supposed to do. That's his job, is to make for sure that the traffic and the roads are in good condition. We've got some rough roads in town. At 5:00, you can run into some traffic on Main Street and it might be hard to make a left-hand turn off of Head Street, as I always do. But I don't think we have a major issue, certainly not like any large city or anything like that. But it is something you have to be conscious of. It is something you have to watch and it is something you have to prepare for. You have to, roads are a big project. Roads don't happen overnight. They take a lot of years to do, as the 260 project showed. We worked on that for many, many, many years. So, I would say right now, we don't have a major problem. We do have some points that we should look at, but we need to think ahead and make for sure that the developers take care of the traffic when they make a development. Thank you.
Thank you. Marie, does the current traffic problem or an upcoming traffic problem?
Well, you know, I got to be honest with you. There are some days where I try to pull out on a Main Street and I think to myself, "Who opened the floodgates? Where are these people coming from?" But then, the next day, I'll inevitably be in like Prescott Valley and I realize that I'm just perfectly fine with my traffic issues in Camp Verde. So, I think that we have some hotspots. I have kids in school, major hotspot, Pecan Lane up onto getting the kids in school, that can cause some backup issues. We're working right now on that, trying to find some solutions to figure it out. I think that we have some growth. We have some issues with, you know, not having enough bus drivers. So, a lot of parents are bus, you know, taking their own children to school. It creates some congestion. That's a hotspot area. There have been an increased amount of accidents, like Robert mentioned, by the McCracken Quarter Horse area. Do I want to see a traffic light there? No, I don't like traffic lights. But is there something necessary that needs to go in there? Probably. Do I want to see another roundabout? No. Personally, I think we have reached our quota on those. But do they serve a purpose? Absolutely, they do. So, I think that with the bypass, the 260 bypass, we alleviated a lot of issues for the town of Camp Verde. Did it essentially kill off Main Street when it got put in? It did. But we're working on building Main Street back. So I think that even as more development comes and everything, I feel like Camp Verde is going to be able to be okay to work with it. One thing that I really think, if we're talking traffic, is we need to have more public parking. I think that that's an issue along Main Street. If we're talking about doing festivals and bringing more people in and how do we keep Main Street alive, we got to talk about situations like that. So, traffic-wise on that aspect, yeah. But the joy of that is, is if we have a festival and you're a resident that doesn't want to go to the festival and you still need to go to Cottonwood or to get to the freeway, we have the Highway 260 bypass. And so, we've set ourselves up well to be able to grow in that aspect.
Nice. Thank you. Wendy, traffic?
Well, I think it's been identified in the general plan as an issue from citizens. Granted, that general plan was 2016, but it was also identified in the 2006 general plan. So I think people would say that there's some traffic issues in Camp Verde. I would agree with Marie, though, that those traffic issues are centered around specific locations at specific times. Clearly, with the town, working with the school district on coming up with some solutions for the Pecan Lane elementary school drop-off area, they have some very good solutions to that problem that can be done in stages, which will really make a big difference. And it'll not only help with kids being dropped off and picked up, but also events that are out there at the multi-use center and sporting events that are out there. McCracken and Highway 260, same with Old Church and Highway 260. Anything that's around the arena, when they're having an event and people are leaving, there's an increase in traffic. It's not what you would see in Prescott Valley or Prescott or Phoenix or Flagstaff, but there is an issue. There's also an issue from time to time when I-17 is shut down and people are routed through Camp Verde. That's a huge issue. They come up through Payson and then they're on 260. 260 comes in and you can bypass and go around and that's great. The other way, they come through, and I'm not sure how they go around through the town to get back on the interchange at Ammonizuma Castle. But that's something that the town is working on. And there's a grant, Robin probably can speak to this and Marie as well, about the grant that the town received and the plans that are ongoing with that. So, I think it's safe to say that, yeah, there's some traffic issues. They're definitely being worked on. It's not constant. It's during certain times or certain events. And we sure would all rather be here than somewhere else where the traffic is really a major concern.
Thank you. Robin, traffic?
I have to agree with what everyone else has said. We're working, I think our biggest kind of point of problem is where Ammonizuma Castle comes into Main Street. We have plans in place. We're trying to get the money to, you know, do this. But we're going to configure eventually that interchange. We're planning on tearing down the old Circle K building. That will be a part of it, I believe. We'll have two-way traffic again going up the Circle K hills we used to. So, we do have plans in place. We have been working on this, trying to get this accomplished. It takes a lot of planning, it takes a lot of money. So, that, I think, is a big, probably our biggest point of contention as far as traffic. Also, we have the school who has terrible problems. I got caught in this the other day trying to get to Butler Park. It was just, it was mind-blowing, the amount of cars and the stoppages. So, something has to be done with that. We're asking now that the school board look at the plans that we received and tell us what is their preferred fix for that problem and how we can help them. So that is currently ongoing. That was on our last agenda, I believe, was one of the items. So we're trying to work with the school for that problem. Oh, I didn't know. That was a quick two minutes. I didn't even talk about bicycles. Okay.
That's important.
Let's go around the table, starting with Robin. On the next, does the town of Camp Verde have a fiduciary problem to help fix affordable housing? Keep your people in town, starting new projects, putting skin in the game to make housing affordable?
We do have a small development of smaller homes. We also have the development behind bashes that's affordable. You know, and what is affordable to me is not affordable to someone else. You know what I mean? And also, we have to, we're trying to get developers in that do affordable housing. If they're going to do regular houses, what are they going to bring apartments in? In fact, we do have apartments, I think, going to go in at Homestead. So, we're trying to work on affordable housing. The town itself, I can't see getting into the housing market. We owned a little strip mall near Town Hall for a time and we had businesses in there and it was just, it didn't work. We were giving them breaks that other small businesses didn't get because they weren't in that strip mall. So, it's hard for the town to actually financially get into the housing market. We can encourage developers and ask for them to do part of their development as affordable Most of them will do that, that are coming in now. They're doing that. So, we certainly encourage it.
Thank you, Wendy.
Well, I think a great example for affordable housing is Sierra Vista. They've done a great job. The town, like other towns in the state, receives what's called Community Development Block Grant money. That money is used, can be used for, to fix up low-income homes, for folks who are lower income. They meet the qualifications and their houses need to be updated. The town can use that money for that. The town can also use that money to help in providing affordable housing. What could be done is, the town could work with nonprofits in seeking out grant money and seeking out other federal funding, state funding, other avenues of funding. And the town can be responsible for managing those funds and working with that nonprofit to find land, secure land, and to build housing that's affordable for the workforce. And, you know, people, this is something, when I worked for the town, special projects, one of the things people were worried about was, oh, you know, affordable housing, that's people who don't have jobs and they don't work and they can't, you know, we don't want those kind of people. And that really is a misnomer for affordable housing. With the wages that are paid and the availability of jobs in Camp Verde, people can't afford, you know, especially young people, can't afford to go out and buy a house. Even the housing development behind bashes, the costs there have just skyrocketed. And so, I think the town should play a role and they should work with, that role should be working with a nonprofit in coming up with some solutions, some housing solutions. whether it be helping, um, first-time homeowners come up with a down payment, um, for housing. That's another possibility that I've seen in other, um, communities. So, there are options and the town should be involved in seeking those solutions.
Thank you. Marie.
Uh, well, I mean, I, those are all great points, Wendy. I honestly, I can, I can truly say, none of which I've ever considered. When you brought the question forward, I, the first thing I thought to myself was is that it's not the town's responsibility to use the town money to make sure that we've got affordable housing. It's the town's responsibility that we can make sure that we zone things properly so that we have these, um, contractors that will want to come in and say, listen, we're willing to bring you in some affordable housing. We do have, um, a housing development and apartment complex that, um, is looking to come in. Uh, we just did approve the rezoning for that whole area and it's going to include affordable housing. It, it's an, it's definitely an issue. I just had a graduate from high school. She is currently, uh, enrolled in Yavapai. She got a job at the hospital. She's doing great. She has nowhere to live. I mean, she's living with me. But that's not what she wants to do. She doesn't want to live at home anymore, but she cannot afford to live on her own. There's nowhere for her to go live. Even if she could find a house, she can't afford it. But it's even finding a house. So, um, we have to, i- it's just this interconnected issue, I feel like, for our community, is that we don't currently have jobs that are going to pay enough for you to be able to afford the housing that is available. And those places that will provide a job, that will pay enough to do that, aren't coming in because those people don't have housing to live. So, where that solution is at, I don't know. That's why hopefully there's seven of us with good heads on our shoulders that can really start to dig down deep and figure out how we can make this whole situation work for our community.
Robert, talk about housing.
Well, affordable housing is a tricky question because like Robin said, what's affordable for one person may not be affordable for another person. Uh, Wendy was talking about the, the block grants and, uh, the work to get money to fix up existing units, and that's a good thing. I remember we worked on that before, a long time ago, uh, when we used to do that. Um, as far as the rezoning, uh, that Marie brought up, that just came before P and Z, just shortly before it went before the council. Um, the cost of construction has skyrocketed. Uh, as the former building official, I know a little bit about construction, actually. Uh, there's a critical nationwide shortage of, of skilled tradespeople, electricians, mechanicals, carpenters. Uh, also, the cost of materials and supplies has just gone through the roof. And sometimes it takes, well, weeks and weeks, if not months, to get the right-sized windows ordered anymore. Uh, so, the cost of construction, I'm not sure what you can do about that. I would be very hesitant about using taxpayer money to go into a private business. I would be willing to look at it, but you've got to be real careful when you, when you consider something like that. And using taxpayer money to fund private enterprise is not something I'm really fond of. It would have to be a very specific circumstance. Um, the apartment complex behind, uh, up there, behind the medical center, that's going to help some. Uh, that little twenty-six or twenty-seven house project behind the soccer field, smaller homes, that's going to help some. Uh, people get confused between the difference of a smaller home and a tiny home. And we stay away from tiny homes. You, you don't want tiny homes. They're dangerous. The smaller homes, my home is only about twelve hundred square feet, but it's just myself and my dog. So, that's plenty for us. And it is an older home and it does have some maintenance issues, I think. Thank you.
That concludes the, uh, questions from the, uh, from the voters. We will move on to closing statements. Let's keep these two a minute apiece and we're going to go in reverse order as to what we did on the opening statements, which would be now Robin, Robert, Wendy, and Marie.
So, I'm first?
You are first.
Oh, no. Okay. You know what? First, I want to say this election has been a very pleasurable one. Um, I think any of us would do well on council. Um, this election, don't have to worry about stolen signs, run over sign. Um, we're very pleasurable, um, uh, people and I think we're all friends. And so, uh, the voters have a great, uh, cast to, to choose from for the three, for the three, three seats. Um, I think Camp Verde's future, oh, that was one minute? That was, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh.
Sorry. Thank you. Um, some of the things that, that I've been involved in during my time on council is to complete, uh, uh, the sport. I want to see the sports complex completed. I want to see sewer and water to two sixty's corridor. I want to protect the river and access to the river. I want to encourage business growth on two sixty, as well as in our downtown area. As a council member, I've been an outspoken advocate for the citizens of Camp Verde and I'd like to keep speaking out for all of the residents of the town of Camp Verde. All of your voices are important and I intend to continue speaking up for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Robert, you're next, sir.
Thank you, sir. I, I do consider all three of these ladies to be my friends. My mother's family came to Arizona in eighteen sixty and my father's family came to Arizona in nineteen twenty-eight. Uh, and I know that if you want to start a fight in Arizona, all you have to do is say the word "water" and then you, everybody's going to town. Um, I agree with every point that Robin made. I live in the downtown. I'm very concerned about the downtown area. My extensive, I'm trying to say this without appearing to be, I have extensive experience in, in Camp Verde. I've been on numerous boards, numerous commissions. I've held numerous positions with the town. I know the history of the town. Um, I'm very, my, my wife used to call me a, a Camp Verde county and she was right. I couldn't deny it. But, um, you know, I'm retired. I've got the time. Uh, I do like to go camping from time to time with my dog. Um, but I've got the time and I've got the energy and I sincerely believe I've got the expertise. But I'd also agree with Robin that any one of these, uh, any one of us up here would be good on the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Wendy.
Well, thank you for this opportunity. You know, our town is on the brink of unprecedented growth. We've talked about that here. We need to be prepared to make, meet the challenges of this growth and protect our quality of life. I am the only candidate with the well-rounded experience in local government, both at the town level, at the county level, at different town levels. I will bring fresh ideas to engage this community in council decision-making. I would like to see more outreach to citizens in order to gain their input and also to provide them with important information. I'm focused on our future and if elected, I will work to provide fiscal transparency and government accountability, preserve the historic character and views that define our town by ensuring that ordinances and policies are in place to guide our future development. I will ensure that new development respects our dark skies and our Verde River corridor. Thank you again for this opportunity.
Thank you.
That's a tough hack to follow. So, um, yeah, yeah, right? Um, I, if I am elected or I guess re-elected, I'm not really sure because I'm sitting on council at the moment. Um, it is super important to me, as I've said, to beautify our town, make it become a gateway into the Verde Valley. Uh, business growth and thriving, the businesses that we already have, to begin to thrive, that's super important to me. Um, community involvement is a huge, uh, goal that I have. I'd like to see community meetings. I feel like sometimes at the council meetings, the public doesn't feel like maybe they can necessarily, their voice is being heard or they're not being followed up with. And so, I want to see the community come in and actually talk. I, I dislike when something's decided on at a council meeting and then all of a sudden later on, I hear, well, why did you do that? Well, why weren't you there to give us input? There are seven people up on council that are trying to make the best decisions for the town and we need more community involvement. And so, if I accomplish nothing else, I hope that I can accomplish the community to come forth and start being more involved with Camp Verde. Um, the other thing that I'm super passionate about, probably because I have kids of the almost adult age or the adult age, is the fact that we're graduating our children out of this community with no skills. Like Robert said, they're, we're lacking greatly on skills. I'm, give me two seconds, I'm going to finish my sentence. But as communities, as adults, as our, as our town, we are obligated to make sure that our children are prepared to go into this world. And the other thing is, is if we do that and we make Camp Verde a place that they're going to want to stay at, give them the skills, give them the jobs, and keep them here. Thank you.
Amen.
Thank you all for your closing statements, um, and for your participation in this forum and to you, our audience, for your attention and participation. And thanks, special thanks goes out to Verde Valley TV for sponsoring, uh, the dissemination of this forum. I want to say personally that Camp Verde, you're lucky folks to have such a qualified group of people who really care about your community. You have some tough decisions in front of you. Remember, Election Day for the primary election is August second. The last day to register to vote, to change your party, registration, or update your address is July fifth. It's coming very, very, very soon. So, early ballot, early voting ballots will be mailed out on the sixth of July. Completed ballots can be returned by mail or dropped off at an election location in Camp Verde or in the Yavapai County Elections Office. If you are registered as an independent voter, you can vote in this election. When you go to your polling place, you will be asked to designate which party ballot you want. If you're an active early voter, you should have already received a form from the County Elections Office mailed out, uh, to determine the ballot you wish to vote on. A ballot will not be mailed to independent voters until the election office receives a form from you indicating your party choice. You may also make your choice by contacting the County Election Office by phone, by email, through the early ballot request website for Yavapai County. Thank you, candidates, for being part of this forum. And to all voters, remember, vote. Vote is people power. Thank you so much.
Thanks. Thank you.